This is 9 o'clock. I call this meeting the Usher County Mission Order. We have a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. It's approved by the Minister of September 15, 2016.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in beautiful liberty and justice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The county commission of Usher County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse on Thursday, September 15, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutright called meeting to order. The president, Terry Cutright, Commissioner Jaycee Rappi, Commissioner Terry Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Deputy Attorney Officer Secretary. Pro-rate commissioner was not in attendance. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance on motion to pass to you, Chairman, unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 26th submitted. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the election officials, alternates, and emergency ballot commissioners for November 8, 2016. General election was requested by Deputy Director Lopon, Usher County Clerk. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the standard form of agreement between owner and contractor and change order number one for the repair slash replacement of a portion of the Usher County Courthouse cross metal shingle roof that will be funded in part by the grant award made by the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Agreement Authority. This change order increases the contract sum from $185,900 to $166,742 by removing structural repairs that are not immediately necessary. At 9:15 a.m., on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission entered executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9-A-4 to discuss potential property acquisition for relocation of the Seventeenth Family Circuit Court in an effort to accommodate the addition of its budget to the Twenty-Sixth Judicial Circuit Court. The president, Terry Cutright, Jaycee Rappi, Terry Wallace, and Tabitha Perry. The commission returned of the section at 9:35 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Terry Cutright advised that after reviewing the availability of prospective properties, the commission has determined that the acquisition of the facility adequate for the housing of the family court chambers and offices will have an estimated cost of from $200,000 to $500,000. Due to the anticipated reduction of revenues in current and upcoming fiscal years, the commission will be focusing on renovating the property that is currently on the county instead of acquiring additional real estate. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Jaycee Rappi, the way for these episodes, which are just a declaration of change to relocation of the Seventeenth Family Court Facility and approved Terry Cutright and Terry Wallace to meet with the county students affected by the proposed relocation. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the change order number one for the Usher County Courthouse chimney repair project. Contract change consists of the demolishing and removal of existing chimney glue that was discovered inside the existing chimney. This portion of work was undiscovered prior to the project construction and will cost $1,250, which will be deducted from the five thousand dollars contingency allowance. The commission discussed the proposed update to procedures to dispatch record services. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved to defer action pending additional review and full commission participation. After discussion on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the appointment of Dirk Burnside as member of Usher County Enhanced Emergency Department Board to serve as EMS representative as recommended by Deputy Director Phillips, EMS Office Manager. Terry Cutright reviewed the following further information items. Item number one, correspondence from Michael Riley, Insurance Commissioner with the West Virginia Office of the Insurance Commissioner. Notified West Virginia State Love and Government entities and nonprofit organizations that flood insurance may be available through the National Flood Insurance Program. Item number two, St. Joseph's Hospital. Three film screening of Being Mortal, October 4, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. in the St. Joseph's Hospital Library. Three, correspondence from Robert Arndorf, the Director of State Government Affairs, regarding Dominion Call to Dominion Transmission, and closing the following documents. Item A, an open letter to Dominion Call to Dominion Transmission customers assuring customers there will be no interruption of service operations, all facilities will continue. B, memorandum agreement, and there's a note, Terry Wallace advised that for warning news reports, the lockout has been lifted. Number four, Usher County building permits, August 2016. Five, Usher County E-911 communication reports, August 2016, as listed. Six agendas and/or notices of meetings, as listed. Seven meeting minutes, as listed. Eight meetings, as listed. Nine appointments, due or upcoming, as listed. Tabled items. Item number one, correspondence from Robert Pio, requesting revision of Lewis Usher Animal Control Facility Volunteer Program. Two, review and discuss due hours cellular services for local county. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The commission recessed at 10:45 a.m. The commission attended meetings of the Usher County Department Supervisors and the Usher County College of Police. The commission reviewed the 3pm, under no further business, on motion by Jaycee Rappi, seconded by Terry Cutright. The commission meeting performed at 3:01 p.m.
Verbal reading. We went on September 15, 2016, meeting and additions or corrections.
One, the first page. Seventh paragraph, this contract change consists of the demolishing and removal of existing chimney glue that was discovered inside the existing chimney. As long as that makes sense, it was the existing chimney glue in the existing chimney. It's up to you if I can put those existences in there. And then on the second page, first paragraph, it's the advisory board for the enhanced emergency program. Advisory board.
Any additions or corrections? Not on the understanding of motion approved. Second. All favors, if you'd like to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. At 9:15, we have an appointment for Greg Preacher, West Virginia University Extension Service Agent, on behalf of Community Education Opportunities Service, CEO S, Presentation of Proclamation for West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day, October 3, 2016, and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2, 2016. At 9:30, we have an appointment with Robert Sargent on behalf of parents of murdered children, Presentation of Proclamation Designated September 25, 2016, as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. At 9:45, we have an appointment with Laura Queen, Victim Service Coordinator, Announcement of Victims of Crown Act Grant Award in the amount of $34,662, and Review of Victim Advocacy Services. Approval and Signature of Grant Contract Agreement, Resolution, Certification, and Subtle Special Conditions. These funds will provide for the majority of the salary of a full-time victim advocate and the Usher County Court Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Usher County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, I'm sorry, to provide direct services to Crown Victims in Usher County. At 10 o'clock, we have a meeting with Prime Derrida, Circuit Clerk, Discussing Resignation of Deputy Clerk Harley Squire, Executive September 28, 2016, and Fanbridge Police. Item mainly to executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9-A-4. At 10:15, we have a meeting with Sheriff Dave Kaufman and Sheriff Tatum, Chief Deputy of Department discussing ETS Solutions invoicing from Buckham Police Department for 2014, 2015, and 2016. Review and Signature of ETS Solutions Annual Maintenance Agreement in the amount of $700 per year, covering incident software effective September 15, 2016. At 10:30, we're going to discuss the relocation of the Seventeenth Family Court Circuit and the effort to accommodate the addition of Judge to the Twenty-Sixth Judicial Circuit Court. At 10:45, Greg Preacher, West Virginia University Extension Service Agent, Discussion of WBU Extension Office Salary, item mainly to executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9-A-4. Item for discussion, action, approval. Correspondent from Tanisha C. Cavas, Senior Justice Program Specialist with the Division of Justice, and Community Service, announcing the Justice Assistance Grant, JAT, award in the amount of $20,000. These funds will provide one prevention resource officer at the Buckham Usher Middle School, approval and signature of the contract agreement, resolutions, standard conditions, and two certifications. This is the pro-officer at the middle school with CJ Day. Do I have a motion to approve?
Is that moved?
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. Item two, correspondent from Tabitha, R. Carey, on behalf of the Buckham Usher Park Recreation Advisory Board, requesting the approval of Buckham Usher School and Usher County Recreation Park Qualificent Trail Complex Sign and Location Place.
You have a filler copy of that.
What's the red and I have the?
I think Hallie Crenshaw's saying that that was where a connector trail could go.
No.
There's also connector trails that run onto the coal mining property in Vice Bruce Four, but these trails only run on Usher County Commission and Board of Education Property. I think the other connector trail that she referred to would be the right line. So there could be potential trails that would be developed in the future.
Okay, do we need to approve that here? Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. At 9:15, we have an appointment with Greg Preacher, West Virginia University Extension Service Agent.
Good morning, Billy.
Good morning, Billy.
Sounds like you have a little to do today. Just a few things. I appreciate you taking the time on a busy day to let us come talk and also take some time to recognize really what still remains to be a big issue in the health of county citizens as well as West Virginians and women and men around the world. I am here on behalf of the WBU Extension Service and the Community Education Opportunities System. It's much easier to just say CEOs, so forgive me if I just go ahead and abbreviate from you or another. One of the projects that the CEOs program groups in Usher County have long been involved with is breast cancer awareness, and we're here today to ask you to sign a proclamation proclaiming October 3 as Breast Cancer Awareness Day, October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. If you'll permit me, I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation and ask you to know this. In 2016, an estimated 1,300 West Virginian women will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately 300 women will die from the disease. Breast cancer continues to be a leading cause of cancer-related deaths among West Virginian women. A woman has about a 1 in 8 or a 12% chance of developing breast cancer in her lifetime and about a 1 in 36 chance, which is 3% chance, of dying from the disease. Currently, the best method to reduce deaths due to breast cancer is through early detection of the disease. Women age 50 and older should have a mammogram at least every few years. Women ages 40 to 49 should talk with their healthcare provider about their screening schedule. Clinical breast exams by a physician or nurse are recommended every three years for women in their twenties and thirties and every year for women 40 and over. Breast self-exam, or BSC, is an option for women starting in their twenties. Women should be told about the benefits and limitations of breast self-exam. Clinical breast exams, breast self-exams, and mammograms can save lives. Women should talk to their healthcare provider about their individual screening schedule. Therefore, in recognition of the important life-saving early detection practices available for breast cancer, we need the Commissioners of Usher County to hereby proclaim October 3, 2016, as West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 2, 2016, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all Usher County women to become aware that they are at risk for developing breast cancer and to discuss screening with their healthcare providers, signed members of the commission. So I guess I'll present this to you and also encourage you to attend. We have our annual, the CEOs hosting their annual Breast Cancer Awareness Event Program that'll be October 3 at Stockard Youth Center. I believe we start the people start gathering around that and observe a light lunch and then have a short program and get everybody back to work for the afternoon. But that'll be October 3. That's a Monday, the first Monday in October. That's usually a very well-attended event. It's important, it's an important issue to recognize and certainly a health issue to be aware of. Does anybody have anything else you need to say? You need to hear anything else?
Thank you very much, sir. I'll see you later this morning.
Yes, I'll be back in. I'll let you get some other things out of the way and talk about your work.
Verbal reading, proclamation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Then moved.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. So approve.
Thank you.
You all have your pictures taken up here.
Yeah, she's got them. That's your hand.
I'm not wearing them.
It's my shirt.
You can have mine if you want.
Well, we don't have your shirt, right? I get wrapped around her one.
How you can, bud?
Sorry.
Thank you. Good, Larry. Thank you. I was there. I'm into the table now, Jaycee.
Going down, so the whole back here's like, boy, you want to pass it to the caller.
How are you doing?
Fine.
Okay. How's everything on the ridge? And how is it nice to be with some of your headaches?
It's beautiful.
And I just have a friend, I just have a notion with that in the last. So it is more than it is, more fun to be on ice.
I'll cover it.
I'll leave more happy if somebody calls and you might be on that. I'll leave myself a note.
Don't read any of the classifieds. The most commercial here, that's all. I am on it here.
Those two are made in a little bit bigger. I guess a lot here. After one more.
Greg, I announced you all through the end of the day, he wasn't there. I just want to let you know that. So I asked him, I said, where's he at? And they said, he is a business.
Was he back with me?
Sure.
I was on vacation.
I didn't, I didn't think I'd be able to see you.
Only the second weekend, I think, with two years, or ten years.
Didn't have fun?
I stayed around the house and did yard work. Very much fun, but it was Christmas, for that.
You haven't been?
Yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, I'll be looking forward to sending back.
We don't get together enough. Didn't take that picture for us, buddy. Didn't take that picture for us.
Just.
You know, I'm Mr. Hugle.
I'm looking for a garden mixture.
That'll work. That'll be bad. See, that.
Our next appointment is the 9th third, so we'll be home. Item for discussion, action, approval. Item number three, approval and signature of correspondence to Region 7 Planning and Development Council requesting an amendment to our current hazard mitigation plan strategies to include additional structure projects, specifically mitigation reconstruction. Do I have a motion to approve?
I shake my head.
Yes. Then I approve. Second, then moved and seconded. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. Item four, approval of Lewis County Animal Control Facility Volunteer Angela Kaye Meyer, all in favor, I'll push and approve.
Then moved and seconded.
All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Opposed, no. Aye, so approve. For your information items, item one, correspondence from Mary Smith, Executive Leader Company, with matters filed announcing the award of a grant in the amount of $1,000 for the Lewis Usher Animal Control Facility. That doesn't need approval or anything else, period. Item two, correspondence from Governor Earl Ray Thomas, approving a Justice Assistance Grant Award in the amount of $20,000. These funds will be provided, will provide one prevention resource officer at the Buckham Usher Middle School. Item three, cash mob Buckham Flyer, E.O. Computer Shop, Thursday, September 22, from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. Four, Usher County Employee Independent Flew Planet Flyer, event to be held on Friday, September 30, from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m., and the commission meeting.
I'll have to say that to all employees and my dependents, if you have county insurance, it will be free of charge and through with those other insurances. This is being offered in coordination with the Health Department.
Thank you, Gary. Item five, Usher County Animal Control Officer Dolph report for August 2, 2016. Item six, Lewis Usher Animal Control Facility CAP report, August 2, 2016. Item seven, Usher County Sheriff's Financial Statement for period ending July 2, 2016. James W. Curry Public Library calendar events, October 2, 2016. Item nine, couponing with the Nifty Rifty Lady Fly, 1 p.m. on October 17 at the James W. Curry Public Library. Item 10, Usher County Miley Report, August 2, 2016. Item 11, agendas and/or notices of meetings. Item 12, meeting minutes. Item 13, meetings. 14, appointments needed for upcoming tabled items. Correspondence from Robert Pio requesting revision of the Lewis Animal, Lewis Usher Animal Control Facility Volunteer Program. Secure request one, the volunteer age limit being changed from 18-year-toage to 16-year-toage with the stipulation that the volunteer be supervised by an adult volunteer. Item two, the volunteer application to be modified to address younger applicants. And three, hours for the volunteer to be extended on Saturday to 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. and offer Sunday hours. We're still waiting on some information on that.
Yes, I did talk to the attorney at West Virginia Court, and did welcome our custody attorney, and even though it doesn't matter if they're over 18 or under 18, if they sign release of liability or a harmless agreement, there's still no guarantee that they won't file suit. Anyone can file suit regardless of what they sign, however, that could be used in the court against them. Obviously, they would, right, they would be, they would be releasing the liability on paper. We're waiting for response from K. Jackson Chini as to whether or not we need to have two different applications, one for minors and one for adults, or if we just need to amend the current one for both. So hopefully, we'll have that for approval next week.
Okay. Item two, review and discuss U.S. Solar Service for Local Government. We have a test GPS in Terry's vehicle right now. I would recommend that we just hold off on this till we see how that works and do a little more research on it.
I would like to see that drive just more from one vehicle than her, because I understand it's in your vehicle and it didn't work in your vehicle. We would need to know that it worked in all vehicles before we obligate the council to that expense.
Part of why I say we need to wait and do a little more research on it, find that why.
I can like it, sure.
Okay. Item three, approval and adoption of updated procedures to dispatch record services. But we didn't work on that last week, because there was some question about timeout time.
Well, there are two additional items discussed in that meeting that you had relative to the procedure to dispatch record services.
I took the time to look over that.
Okay. Two other items that were discussed. One, whether or not you would like to have an estimated time of departure noted in your policy, giving a cap. If a record service accepts a call, they must depart their location within X amount of minutes. And then the second was, if you have a rec involving multiple vehicles, if you have a three-person or three-vehicle pileup, do you then dispatch three different records? Currently, you just, you dispatch one, and if they get to the scene and know they can't handle it, then they're responsible to call for that. Currently, you just, you dispatch one, and if they get to the scene and know they can't handle it, then they're responsible to call for backup. It was mentioned by a rec we used to operate in another county that in that county, they would automatically dispatch the same amount of records they have at the accident. So I was holding up on the policy until I had that information from you, or even adopted as written and included in your agenda right now.
And I figured you may have a little more input into that with going to U.S. Service, Service Office.
Why would we allow them to call a rec if you got three vehicles and five record services said they can handle the three vehicles? However, if you've got the four lane blocked after the three vehicles, then I would, but the officer that's on the scene made the recommendation that another record service needs to be dispatched as a number of vehicles.
Then I can be leaving. But Larry, sorry, we'll have to do this right now.
And then I also read in there where the record service took the call, that they couldn't handle it because they didn't want to take the vehicle, which I thought was, I did read, I thought was fine.
Okay, that's a change that's implemented right now. Did you want to implement an estimated departure time or required departure time?
I think that is something that we need to know, because if there's an officer out there and it's on a rec on a four-lane or even twenty-south or whatever, don't major traffic time, I think if that record service can't respond, then another one needs to be called. I'm not a timer, but when that call's made, the record service should be able to notify the call center that they are...
Or be an added time form to be in brief.
After they answer the phone, within the three minutes, if they can handle the call, if they can handle the call, then, you know, five minutes at the outside. We just need to know if that record service has contacted, if in fact, they're going to go get in the record driver and head to the scene. That's what we need to know. Now, the time limit, you know what I mean, how long you want to give them, you know what I mean? Probably a minute, minute and a half would be probably good enough, because they answer the call and they're going to go out there and get the record and head, that's probably fine, but you may want to give them an extra minute and a half. But they need to respond, because we have officers out there that's highway blocked, you know what I mean, and I don't want somebody to think, well, they've got to stop by McDonald's.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you need to plan something about minutes.
Emergency medical services, the MS, that's three minutes.
Yeah, but, but they're on duty. I don't, I don't think if I have on the record service, I can get out of there.
Well, you're talking, if you get called sometime after you go to bed, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I think that's taken into consideration, but you've got to understand that it's after you go to bed, it's from ten o'clock to five in the morning, there's really a whole lot of traffic. So you have a little leeway for that record service to respond, it's not like major traffic time in school, just got that down at, you know, middle school, high school.
I understand that, but you're saying be out on the road in three minutes.
Well, I think they should let the call center know that they're in route. And I think if they're going to be in route, then whatever time it takes them to get their clothes on and get in that rec, they need to go to the scene.
Possibly a compromise would be, give a timeframe, but that when they get into their vehicle, they notify the call center, radio, and why it's, if they are in route.
But the problem is that they receive, they get in the vehicle thirty minutes after they've been called, you know what I mean?
No, I'm going to go, I mean, there's just, it has to be maybe a five-minute period of time, if they should be in the vehicle notifying the authorities and call center that they're in route.
Currently, they are not required to depart their location within a certain amount of time. That's the question, whether or not you want to place a cap on the amount of time they have before they must depart, regardless of their location.
Personally, I don't think that three or five minutes is enough time, especially in the middle of the night. You know, I think you'd need at least ten minutes.
I think again, to the phone, again, to the phone, and you go, got a rec out here, are you able to take that rec? You say, yes, you know what I mean, I will be responding. Three to five minutes is a long period of time, you know what I mean, after you get the call. You just set that timer up there and just see how long that is. It doesn't take three to five minutes to put the clothes on, my opinion.
What do you think, please? I'd say five minutes, give them an extra timeframe to get out. But again, as soon as they are in the vehicle, they need to contact.
And let them know they're...
They're on their route, so if they know it's not being, not being moved away, what's that notification comes out?
And I'm not much concerned about the five minutes. Get the calls in after somebody goes to bed, and I, that call comes in right now, and it's nine thirty-five, and you have a rec out here on the four line. I think we need somebody to dispatch now. And I don't think, you know what I mean, five, ten, fifteen minutes or wait till you get your hands on it, go ahead and finish eating breakfast or whatever, cuts it. If we have a record service, then they need to respond when they receive the call, as fast as they can do it. If they can't, then they just need to pass it to another record service.
So you're saying as fast as they can do it, be three, five minutes?
I would say you could do it faster than that. I'd say three minutes, you know what I mean, until you see it's giving an extra two minutes. If you get a call and you want to handle something, I can assure you, that'd take five minutes to get your clothes on, you know what I mean? And get in the vehicle. Five minutes is a long period of time. If you don't think so, just watch that clock for five minutes. And you can go drink a cup of coffee, you can go down to prosecutor's office, you can go to the master to back up here in five minutes, you know what I mean?
The record works for what, and now I'm here paying the budget? I'll make a motion to set the timeframe to five minutes. That's two minutes more than urgency squad, which is probably pointed out, it's on duty. But again, I'd also want them to, and I'll make a procedure to notify the call center that they are in route, let's get the vehicle moving.
Yeah, I'll concur with that, second, that, because I'm the one officer standing out there thirty minutes with the border department directing traffic, whoever may be, waiting on a record service, you know what I mean? With all the league, well.
Been moved and seconded, on paper, see if I'm saying I have it.
Huh?
Vote no, I have it so approved.
Well, I'd revise policy on that city's agenda perfectly.
Our next regular meeting is of the Upsher County Commission, is September 29th, 2016, at 9:00 a.m., Upsher County Patrol Center. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Sergeant, our nine-thirty meeting is with Robert Sargent, on behalf of parents of murdered children, presentation of confirmation designated September 25th, 2016, at National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. Mr. Sargent, if you'd step up here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am a member of parents of murdered children and other survivors and homicide victims, local contact person, and a member, I was, my mom was murdered in French Creek in 1991 by my father. So the support group that I've been involved in, POMC, has been a great support group, and I've been involved with the National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims for about ten years. It's a great way to remember our loved ones, mainly the line here today is to show awareness that this does happen, it can happen when we least expect it. And unfortunately, as we know around here, it's usually a pretty safe community, but there's been a lot happening around here that we thought, it's a group we're going to have, but we don't want new members. So this, they make reason I'm here today is to want to remember all of our loved ones that were stolen from us, and also to raise awareness that we are here not just for homicide survivors, but I, members of the community as well. So the confirmation I would like to read is, whereas a nation devoted to the rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, America needs to remember victims for whom these rights have been torn away by homicide. And whereas murder extinguishes the hopes and dreams of more than 15,000 victims of homicide a year, and an untold number of fellow Americans now live daily with the absence of a loved one. Whereas National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims honors the memories of murder victims and recognizes the impact of homicides surviving family, friends, and loved ones have to deal with. And whereas murder impacts each and every one of us and every community nationwide, we must all work diligently to prevent the violence that destroys lives and devastates families. Whereas family members and other loved ones struggle alone with their loss and become overwhelmed with the devastating experience of homicide. And Upsher County's joint forces and birthday service programs, justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Upsher County and America to remember their tragedy, honor their courage, and fasten whatever we can to help them rebuild their lives on this National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims, which is September 25th, 2016.
Thank you. We're talking that song.
Was that your mother or...
Yeah, it's my mom.
Old Alexandra.
Yeah.
I remember that. I am sorry for your lost state, and I'll move.
We've moved and seconded, on paper, see if I'm saying I have it.
And if you'd like to look here, get your picture, just to make a little bit more awareness, you know what I mean, it would be great.
Vote no, I have it so approved. Our next appointment is at nine forty-five. It's nine forty-five. We have an appointment with Laura Queen, Victim Services Coordinator, announcement of victims, crime act grant award in the amount of $34,622, and review of victim act services.
Good morning.
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 Good day.
Good. Good morning, Laura.
I'm going to pack up a little bit of information that the older members of the commission, well, I shouldn't say the older.
McClellan. How they are.
You're the newer member.
They're much older.
This is just information that I packed up, that they couldn't send me on what we went down, just a little sort of explains the court process. In this and in the book.
What it talks about, it's just like this.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to thank you again for your continued support at the fiscal office terms for the victims of crime act grant funds, or VOKA, as we like to call it. This recent award received on September 12th in the amount of $34,622 supports the salary and training opportunities for the victim medical position in the Upsher County Prosecute Attorney's Office. Our office first applied for VOKA funding in 1997, and we were awarded funds for the next year. For the past eighteen-plus years, it was the Upsher County Commission has stood behind and supported the VOKA grant and the possession of the position of victim services coordinator. I came on board in March of 2002, almost fifteen years ago. I must say, there has never been a year when filing a grant application that I didn't feel the commission was 100% behind me and willing to continue to support the victim services position, even when for a couple of years, there was no certainty that we were going to be funded. We have been very cognizant of what this position means to the victims or community, and we're willing to step up and keep this position funded. It's been a while since I've been up here to speak to the commission about the program, and I thought this might be a good time to refresh the commission about the program and what these grant dollars and your support provides. The primary goal of the program is to provide direct services to all victims of crime in the county. The Victims Assistance Program in the Upsher County, in Upsher County currently provides and exceeds the services required as part of the Victim Protection Act of 1984. Services typically involve advising, advising victims of their rights, providing crisis counseling, court notification, case status updates, information and referral to other agencies for needed services that I can provide, and assistance when necessary in filing for crime victims' compensation funds. The program serves victims of violent crimes such as domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, homicide, assault and battery, as well as property crimes like breaking and entering, destruction of property, and various paper crimes. From January 1st, 2015, through December 31st of that year, there were 1,937 misdemeanor cases and 184 felony cases for magistrate court in Upsher County. Many of these cases involve one or more victims. Domestic violence cases continue to be a large part of the victim population. During the time period, during this time period, I provided services to 257 new victims of crime, of that total, seventy-one for victims of domestic violence. It's the hope of the victim services program that for public awareness and outreach provided by the program through continued collaboration with other agencies that have in contact with victims, that we can benefit directly or indirectly all victim populations. The Upsher County Sheriff's Department, McKinnon City Police, State Police, DHHR, Women's Aid and Crisis, and the Child Advocacy Center all work together to establish trusting relationships with the community and victims of crime in a coordinated and consistent response to returnings. Again, I want to thank you for your continued support this year and years to come for the victims of crime act grants and victim services coordinator position in prosecutor's office.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you for the service you've given to our victims. In my experience, many people, they're not familiar with criminal justice, so it's probably rather frightening thing to have to go, in terms of testimony, in terms of providing that information. And I know that, knowing you as a person, your sensitivity, and I'm certain that you represent the Upsher County Prosecuting's Office of much degree of professionalism, and that's an important factor.
I appreciate your support, I appreciate all your continued support. It's been a lot of years, and with the grant continues, it looks pretty good for hunting for the next few years, but it's one of those things where you never know whether you're going to have that involvement. I do appreciate your support and appreciate you, because I'm grateful.
Very, very. And I'd just like to say, on Monday, I think you've had a fantastic job across the county's office. But with that being said, I have seen several times that you've been there for the victims of these crimes and been with them clear through the experience from the day it started until after it was to the court. So on that, I want to thank you for what you do for the victims.
I appreciate that. And it's not just about the crime and the day that it happens and the moment it happens. It takes a while for that case to get through the court process.
And sometimes...
And sometimes years, sometimes years. I have had a relationship with victims or family members of victims for many years.
And sometimes it's unbelievable what happens, and it's hard to, you end up taking some of it home. But I appreciate your fifteen years that you have, that you have helped with the prosecutor's office, but I have noticed that you've been there for the victims, which to me shows me a lot, you know what I mean? Not only do you work for the prosecutor's office when you do that, you also care for the victims, and I think, I think that is a big plus factor. Thank you.
It's not like we know most people or ever, yes, or ever, exactly.
Thank you, Laura.
Some of the victims are mad.
I have to say something about Laura, we...
Yes, ma'am.
She's been there for us all these years. Will you have?
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded, on paper, see if I'm saying I have it.
Huh?
Vote no, I have it so approved. Thank you, Laura. Our next appointment is at ten o'clock with Brian Gere Day, until legal time. It's ten o'clock, and I'm up late. An appointment with Brian Gere Day, Circuit Clerk, discussion and resignation of Deputy Clerk Harless Ward, effective September 28th, 2016, and plan for replacement. Item may leave executive session per West Virginia Code, six days, nine and eight days quarter. Would you like to join the executive session, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to move into executive session? Been moved and seconded, on paper, see if I'm saying I have it.
Huh?
Vote no, I have it so approved. Now, actually... Now, exiting executive session number six. Our next appointment is at 10:15, Sheriff David Kaufman, Chief Assistant Deputy Clerk.
David, 10:15. Your name's on there.
What do you think? Will you accept the resignation from your 10 o'clock?
I will accept the resignation.
I'll second that.
We're moving second to the top of the table. I oppose no, I have so. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
How are you doing, President?
I'm good, sir. How are you doing, my fellow... Ladies, I think we're here this morning to talk about the PTS Computer Song Program that law enforcement agents need to report their uniform crime status that is required by the state and the FBI. It's kind of a lovely year, ladies. Back in 2008, Barbara Miller, being sheriff, and Mayor King Davis entered into an agreement on a software program. The agreement was that the city would buy the server, computer server, the software, whatever else they needed to make this program work. They entered into an agreement with Barbara at that time that we could come on board and use this program for set amount of money, annually. I didn't know that there was a written agreement out there. I learned of this written agreement about 45 days. And I, the chief of police, Matt, approached me back then, and he said that we were going to have to upgrade this system. And we sat and talked about it for a few minutes. And then that's when he made me aware that we wasn't taking care of our obligation that was promised earlier to the city.
Had they built the county? Had they submitted bills for invoices?
Well, those were big, and that's the situation we ran into. I spoke to Amy too. And she apologized that there was not an annual invoice sent out. I'm sure if we would have received the hard copy of the invoice, we would have probably been able to make that payment because fiscal year '14 and '15, if it's my understanding, money had been budgeted in the line item for the sheriff to pay that month. But that bill wasn't paid, and that money went back to the estuary. Then in '15 and '16, by half induction, it was money budgeted for that payment, not receiving an invoice. If not all, the majority of that money went back to General County at the end of the fiscal year. And now, they're saying the over the past three years.
Is that including this year?
That would include this year.
Yes, yes.
And the agreement was $1,260 handed to the city. But then now, '16, '17 budgeted, there was no money budgeted in that line item for this But there is, the city apologized, they're accepting responsibility, saying the city avoided you. Definitely wasn't this affected, it was just something that they missed.
Now, we're two more than disagreeing, because you have a capacity for caution for this.
If we went out...
Yeah, if we were doing it on our own.
If we would go out on our own, I'll give you ballpark. We'd go out on our own and do it, I understand, probably somewhere between $14,000 and $16,000 to get the server, the software, the license. And it's a mandatory program.
Yes, sir.
Just for the support fees, the city contributes $9,000. Your portion is 14% on the support fees, and then like the sheriff said, you got that deserved purchase of rights.
It's just opened up a big savings for the county. It is a big savings. There, you know, the issue really happened before you this morning, is this money went back to the General County Fund, and now this year, '15, '16, '17, it wasn't even budgeted. And I just thought it was important to break the issue before you gentlemen. A lot of, I think, the facilities attempt to go on their own, it's as well. Two calls, I don't know anything else that we could, any other direction we can go with it. This is a program that is used across the state and accepted program. For $1,260 per year, I think we got a pretty good deal going here, buddy.
I'm sure you're saying for '37, '80, we'd be taking care of this year and be caught up?
And then $700 for your annual software maintenance for September 15th.
Right, this year. Well, every year there's a $700.
Which is billed, that's not billed from the city, that's billed directly from the software company.
Well, that's what's added to budget this year.
It's my head.
So you did additional $700.
And then, the reason that the chief can't begin with was that, like I said, they want to upgrade the system, they're saying it's necessary, the IT people wave up my head. They hacked it upgraded, and they're saying that the sheriff, he wants to stay on the program, it costs a additional $500.
You have to get a new license.
New license under our name to work through their system. So I guess that would be an additional expense for the future, once this is upgraded.
After this year.
And then the maintenance costs were going to go up $16...
$65 a year.
$5 a year or so.
But I think that was included in the second hybrid now, because that wasn't until I was pretty sure.
Gentlemen, you know, if I had the money, I'd be glad to call the city up and say, send an invoice, I'll write you a check, and we'd be done. Like I said, it wasn't budgeted this year, and then the money was a lot budgeted. The year prior, went back to the county, General County.
Do you have the $700 in your budget?
I have what?
The $700. And you...
You legal alcohol deal here, is that what you're trying to do?
No, I just, no, if you do what you do, it doesn't...
But I don't, it's not, I don't have that money appropriated to go in that direction.
Okay. Well, my thoughts on this are if we have, if we budgeted for it in two previous years, and the money came back for us, we still owe the bill. We didn't budget for it this year, we should have budgeted for it this year.
We should have. And she's told me she's done the office, but that's probably my mistake. Of course she knew, but then she could not determine, she realized that money in the year passed, and she said, well, why even ask for this?
You may remember that budget hearing, you asked the sheriff to try to cut down his budget, and that was one of the items that he had said, they thought that they could cut out, because they didn't know what it was there for.
Right, because it hadn't been paid for the previous two years, it looked like it was just...
I also remember that budget hearings, if we said, things get tighter, come back another time, and see what we could do.
It doesn't really matter, we owe the bill, we just need to pay it, period. I mean, you know what I mean? We have them now, we're on the back, so we need to do the right thing, we just need to pay the bill.
And I think it's a good deal that we got them. I don't think we want to spoil them.
Regardless of the circumstance, you owe the bill.
We can pay, we can pay whatever this money is today to the city, or go out and invest in $15,000, $16,000 on our own, and that's just a simple math to say that we're going in the wrong direction.
So it's $700 per 24 hour?
Is that right?
Yeah. I move that we...
I'll second that.
Then moving second to the top of the table. I oppose no, I have so. Well, thank you for coming up with that.
Appreciate it.
Have a good weekend.
I'll try, dude. I'll set the truth stand there in the morning.
Just don't turn the news on, see what's going on.
Yeah.
Did you manage to have the annual maintenance agreement have the signature of that as well?
No, that was a $700 agreement.
Right, but you need to sign the agreement.
Okay. I'm going to let you kind of look at the other side.
We have that.
Should I guess all...
We're moving second to the top of the table. All favor, second to the top of the table. I oppose no, I have so.
Actually, why don't you sign it?
It's hard to store the due...
I would ask that. And probably it should be signed, or at least for everyone.
Oh. I've been here for twelve years. So anyhow, there are ten more.
Well, I would say you're all too... That's your last term, and then when there's a new sheriff, another four years.
We'll get him coming down. But he's always saying, you'll be sure you include that in if you come in.
Yes, we will, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
We have a discussion on the 17th Family Court Circuit and having to accommodate the addition of the Judge of the 26th Judicial Circuit. As you know, I was appointed to be the lead on looking at properties, possible acquisition of properties by the commission, and we looked at, well, we started out looking in the courthouse to see if we could figure out anything out for the judges. And nothing seemed to work. That was back in January and February. So then we went outside to see if what a possibility would be with acquiring a piece of property. After looking, and we looked at, I think, four different properties. And with the purchase and the remodeling, it was probably between $200,000 and $500,000, which I just, we didn't feel that the county could afford right now. So then we come up with a solution to relocate to a property the county already owns, which would be the massage therapy down at the extension office. And what our plan is, is to move the administrator and the assistant administrator to that location designated in an annex of the courthouse that would permit us to hold budget hearings and Board of Legalization Review hearings at that location.
Order of assessment of appeals.
Got a Board of Assessment Appeals, and conduct county business as we had to at that location. And move the Family Court Judge Office into our administrator's office, move their secretary into Jeanie Zickafus' office, move Jeanie Zickafus into Tabitha's office, and request that the Justice Chambers here, the commission chambers, be open on Thursday from the Family Court till we can still hold the commission meetings here. This would become the Family Courtroom. This would be the Family Courtroom other day. And move Judge Hall into the Family Courts, what supposedly the courtroom now, and the offices adjoining it for this day, at a savings of $200,000 to $500,000 in the county. Okay, with all of that, any more discussion?
I think that pretty well covers that, man. This is all been done due to the fact of the cost of liability. Do that.
Then, fundamental man, right?
I think one other thing to note would be that there's a small conference area that will be available at the new office space at the second annex that would allow for space for other boards, such as the fire board, parks and rad, online protection. Boards that currently use the commission meeting chambers for their monthly meetings would be able to use that space.
Keep us out of our eye on the extension service.
Yes, because they've been here twice, and being that close to them, we could be able to just be on the map.
In about 15 minutes, we'll find out whether I want to be friendly with you about this or not.
Well, do I have a motion to approve this one? Moving second to the top of the table. I oppose no, I have so. So they have now, 10:45. I have a year early, Greg. We'll sign some more checks. We have a 10:45 meeting, Craig Preacher, West Virginia University Extension Service meeting. Oh, wait a minute, let me read this. Discussion on WBU Extension Office salaries, I may lead to executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9, 8-4.
I would, just because depending on what happens, if nothing else, you're going to leave, we might have other record.
It's personal, yes?
Yeah, it's personal stuff.
So, we're moving second, we're moving into executive session. All favor, second to the top of the table. And we're now exiting executive session number seven. Entry of such note that on Mr. Preacher, Ken Scharms, do I have a motion to move with or not take any action? Motion being made. That's the one.
Appreciate your...
Thank you.